I think it's probably your December, my targeting December, so you'll see.
Hopefully during winter. He is serious. Finally, we don't know. This is just ten years old.
No, he didn't do it. Now, um, it's lifetime. So he's playing actually a tournament in Pink Ridge Silver Bay, uh, on the eighteenth. Yeah.
Is it, but we're recording?
We're gonna call, we're gonna call first right now. Do you wanna start or not? Okay, we're recording now. June seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting on the Berners Township Planning Board is now called to order. Please stand for the flag. My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the ruling justice for all. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to the Planning Board of the Township of Berners was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building Collier Lane, Basking Bridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Bernersville News, Whippany, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridge One in New Jersey, on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Berners Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after ten P M. and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after ten thirty P M. Um, roll call, Mr. Schley, please.
Bowman.
Here.
Demergian.
Here.
Manduk.
Not here yet.
She's gonna be here a little famously.
Miss Masstrangelo.
Here.
Mr. Seville.
Here.
Mr. Aorio.
Here.
Malick.
Here.
Mr. Padici.
Here.
Spanish, here. Mr. Drill.
Here.
And myself, Dave Schley, here.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you. Um, Mr. Crane and De-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Crane and Mr. McNally both notified us that they would not be.
Thank you. So I'd like to have a motion to excuse Mr. Crane and Deputy Mayor McNally.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
David, are you marking for Cindy or do you need, you know, to make the recording, have everyone say their names when they make motions and everything?
I'm gonna do my, uh, yeah.
Okay.
I suggested.
If I don't get something.
All right, who made the motion?
I'll make the motion, Tyler.
Mr. Seville and Miss Masstrangelo second to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the approval of minutes, uh, draft minutes from the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Um, Mr. Malick, Mr. Bowman, and Mr. Seville are not eligible because they were absent. So can I have a motion from the remaining members to approve the draft minutes?
I make the motion, Kathleen Masstrangelo, to approve the minutes as written.
Second?
Second. Demergian.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we do have abstentions.
You have three abstentions.
Mr. Bowman, Mr. Malick, and Mr. Seville. Next item is the approval of a resolution for William and Carol Moyet, block eleven, four zero one, lot eleven, eleven Mountain Road subdivision. PB twenty-two dash zero zero one approved. The resolution date is two zero two two dash zero five dash seventeen dash V two. And, um, Mr. Bowman, Mr. Bowman, Mr. Demergian, Mr. Seville, Mr. Aorio, Ms. Manduk and myself are eligible to approve the resolution.
Right, but Manduk's not here.
Right, so I'm just saying-
No, well, um, there's one correction on the resolution I was gonna bring up.
Yes.
Uh, mi- mi- on page twelve, the roll call names, uh, Ms. Manduk should be, uh, deleted and Mr. Malick should be inserted there.
That the table.
Wait.
Cross out Manduk and put in-
Malick?
Malick.
Okay. So is, I'd like to have a motion to approve the resolution. Version number is stated.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Paul. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. Roll call, please, Mr. Schley.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Mr. Demergian. Yes. Mr. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Aorio.
Yes.
Mr. Malick.
Yes.
Mr. Padici.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We now have a public hearing continued from May third, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Mr. Ahmad and Dr. Phazen and Kevin and Athalie Kirkwood, block twenty-two, twenty-three, zero one, lots four and five, forty-eight and with sixty-two, Wisteria Way. amended preliminary and final subdivision, PB twenty-one dash zero zero five. I'd like to say that everybody's still under oath. We left it, Mr. Ahmad, that, um, you were supposed to go to all of the residents of Wisteria Way to have them sign a consent form. Uh, and it's in our packets. Uh, will you tell, please tell the board the results of this?
Uh, yes, I was able to get signatures of all the-
Of all the members, of all of them?
Yes.
Is that something that should be-
Yeah, just, so that, he submitted that. Um, there's just the one that was submitted via Dave Schley was missing one signature of-
It was number forty-nine with Wisteria Way.
With Wisteria Way. Did you pick up the second signature?
Yes, I just did.
Okay, so can I, can you submit, let's get this admitted as an exhibit. Let's just see if we had any exhibits. I don't think we did.
No, I don't think we did.
Admit that as exhibit A one. Yep, and A one is going to be the entire package of lot owner consent forms.
Right, with all the appropriate completed.
Right, with all the completed signatures. Now, just as a reminder to the board members who are here and to any board members who listened to the recording and signed the certification. First of all, the hearing commenced on April five, twenty twenty-two. And then it continued to May three, twenty twenty-two. Near the end of the May three, twenty twenty-two hearing session, there's a lot of discussion amongst the board members and the board got into deliberations. And Mr. Bowman had suggested a motion which was not formally made. It was a straw poll. And the straw poll on Mr. Bowman's motion was to, how many people would be in favor of approving the application on the condition that the applicant first obtain written consent of all the owners of all the lots in the subdivision to the elimination of this emergency access easement? And the straw poll was four to two in favor of doing that, which again was non-binding. And so the applicant was then told to do that. I took the language that had been worked out that evening. Mr. Schley and I fine tuned the language and the consent form is in accordance with the language, in my opinion, that Mr. Bowman had suggested in his motion that Mr. Schley and I had. And now, in my opinion, what the board has to do is now continue the deliberation and then vote.
Yeah, we have to continue it and vote. So we have to start our deliberations. I think the applicant has said, has given his-
Correct. He said it-
He's, he's said what he's going to say. And he is, he is best to his ability, has made his case that he would like the easement vaca- uh, emergency access road vacated. So now-
Right, so the condition requiring the emergency access easement would be eliminated. That's what he's requesting.
Yeah, but we can only recommend.
But you can eliminate the condition-
Right.
And then the township committee would have to determine whether or not to vacate.
Vacate, right. Okay, so what, let's, what does the board wanna do? Make a motion and vote?
Debate a little bit.
Go ahead.
Unless someone else wants to go first.
Go ahead.
Okay, for the record, again, because Mr. Schley's doing it, just identify yourself for the record.
Right, so Kathleen Masstrangelo. Um, unfortunately, I couldn't be here for the last meeting on May third, but I have certified that I watched the video. I actually watched it contemporaneously with the hearing. So I wasn't part of that straw vote, just to be clear, that four to two straw vote. Um, I've given it a lot of thought and I appreciate that you, you know, have done your due diligence and talked to your neighbors and I appreciate that you made some really good, interesting arguments. Um, I did go back and I looked at the original subdivision resolution for the estate. Um, where the planning board stated on, at various times, they had a strong opinion that given the length proposed cul-de-sac, that they would, um, need an alternate emergency access into the track. And they also said that there was a clear and express intent for the alternate access and that there should be full disclosure in all the deeds of the easements. Meaning any easements that existed. There were some others, but including the emergency access. Then I looked at the January fifth, twenty twenty-two zoning board resolution. There was a hearing of December eighth. I guess you went to the zoning board for some variances, including you wanted to build where there were some steep slopes. You wanted to reorient your residents towards a street. And at that time, you wanted to propose to construct a dwelling of sixty-five hundred and eighty-six square feet of floor area with a four-car attached garage. And in that hearing, you made the representation that the applicants, this is a quote, also proposed, well, a quote of the resolution, to keep the presently existing swimming pool and access road in drive. Um, you were applying for a C-one hardship variance based on the fact that you had steep slopes and an emergency access easement because you couldn't build in that area. And a C-two variance as well. And I looked at the language of what the zoning board did in granting those variances and they in particular took in to account that you had this access road on the property, which you said you weren't gonna rebuild. And that was four months ago or five months ago. Then I looked at the Emerald Valley case that you've cited extensively. Emerald Valley is a case that was in Masti Ridge on the other side of town where they did get a modification, actually an elimination of an emergency access road. Um, we know that's not precedent, meaning that's not ruling, that doesn't affect our ruling because zoning board or other zoning or planning board resolutions don't, aren't binding. But I looked at it extensively. And in that it said, the standard for considering, this is the Cohen test, Cohen versus Fairland, nineteen sixty-four case. The standard for considering requests for modification or elimination of conditions, quote, proper showing of changed circumstances or good, other good cause, or if enforcement of the restrictions would frustrate an appropriate pers- purpose. And no adverse, adverse effect on public safety. And this is especially so where the underlying use serves general welfare. Uh, the planning board went on in that case to determine that there was never an emergency situation ever in that subdivision. And in addition, that there were no objections from the fire department, the Liberty Corner Fire Department and the Township Fire Development Bureau. Then I revisited the hearing again, the particularly the one from May third where they asked the fire official to come. I was not here, but I did watch it and I watched it again. And the fire chief of Basking Ridge, who's been in his job for three years as a chief and been an active firefighter for thirty years, said in his first year as chief, he identified access roads, drove around town with his group to determine his employees, what to do if something happened. He particularly noted that number forty-eight on Wisteria is a very large structure, over six thousand feet, set back well from the road, needs two ladder trucks for a fire for a house that size. And the only way to get a second ladder into that house is an access road. Five houses above the access road, all in excess of six thousand square feet. There's an eight-inch water main that should be sufficient for firefighting purposes, but he noted that it would be barely sufficient if there was a fully involved structural fire and supplemental water would be likely to be required from the pond at the foot of the access road, carried by five-inch large diameter hoses. And if the access road was closed, the hose would have to go up Wisteria Way and the road may be blocked by other fire trucks. So there would be no guarantee that the hose could get up. There's twenty-five hundred feet of hose on each truck, barely enough to get from the bottom of Wisteria to the top. And if the longer hose, um, if they need another pumper truck to get water up the hill, they would have to put it in the middle of Wisteria. And if they need supplemental water, they put the pumper truck near the pond, lay the hose across the access road and cut up, I'm sorry, lay, they would lay the hose up the access road to cut off four hundred feet of length, feeding the response. And they can do it with one pumper. He also noted there had been twenty-six emergency calls on Wisteria Lane in the last ten years. Um, and one call for Sandy, which required, um, I'm sorry, excuse me. Um, there was a quote that, you know, you might not need. There hasn't been a need for the use of the access road. And he said, well, it's like a life vest. When you need it, you need it, you want it. So in other words, he liked to have the access road. He went on to say, and many times, that for him, the access road gave him many options. Was a perfect solution for everything, but it gave him options to save lives if we're needed, especially on those homes of over six thousand square feet with the long driveways at the top of a very long cul-de-sac. He also noted that the fire hydrant at the corner of Wisteria and Meeker failed one time and they had to go further away to the fire hydrant at White, uh, White Neck, excuse me. And at that time, six companies responded. And they were able to contain the fire because the fire was at the bottom of Wisteria and they only required one pumper truck. He noted that a larger equipment ladder could use the access road and could turn onto the access road. And that they only use going over the lawns as a last resort. And if it's lo- wet or soggy, that they would bog down. It's a risky, not approved move, a very expensive, um, thousands of dollars to the town if a ladder truck were to get stuck on lawns. And only a heavy wrecker could get them out. It's a last resort. And if the tree is down, there's no time to cut it down because that takes thirty minutes with a chainsaw. Instead, they prefer to go a different way. As he said, fire doubles in size every minute. So the access road gives me options to some very large exposure to protect property and lives. And the hydrant for the development has failed, as I said, and there's a twelve-inch main off of Meeker. The nearest alternate is White Neck Road, which is over the hill, uh, over, very far away or over the hill into Red Rock. He also noted that if the first in, engines come up White, Wisteria, they lay out large five-inch diameter hoses and they should not drive a truck over that, cannot drive a car over that and could block the road. So based on what I know, Cohen, the standard, which I believe is still the standard, Mr. Drill?
Yeah, th- that's the standard. I read that standard into the record off of, um, one of my crib sheets. Um, and I'll just repeat it. It's at the court in Cohen versus Fairlon, which is reported at eighty-five, New Jersey, two thirty-four, and at pages two thirty-seven to two thirty-eight, this was an appellate division nineteen sixty-four case noted. Even if the condition is agreed upon, agreed upon by an applicant, it can be later eliminated. But if its elimination will not have an adverse effect on public health or safety, and this is especially so where the underlying use serves the general welfare. That's what I read to the board first hearing session, second hearing session, and now the third hearing session.
So based on that standard, I'm looking at the general welfare on public safety. And I appreciate that you got the signatures of the current residents, but as we know, the, once this emergency access road is gone, it's gone. And so I am not comfortable based on the testimony of people that have been in our department or have experienced thirty years as fire officials granting this application. I believe it is a public safety issue. I believe that when someone else takes over these homes, they're, they're going to have to deal with the lack of emergency access road. I also thought about the balancing act. You told us that in different ways, um, your wife said she didn't like the lack of privacy for the road that is behind them, behind your house. Would you have six thousand square foot house going up over this access road? I also looked at, you talked about wanting a squash court where the access road is. To me, why, I appreciate that you want your son to be a squash player, as you mentioned. I do not believe that is a valid explanation or not explanation, valid reason to get rid of a public safety access or the access road. And I also believe it's contrary to the state law. So that is my reasoning. I appreciate your attempt to do this, but I would be of no help.
Any other, um, members of the board would like to have any more comments before we attempt to have a vote on this?
Just for the record.
And I, I will ask who's eligible at some point before, before we get to a vote, so we're very clear who is eligible to vote. But I'd like to have some continuation of the discussion before we get to that.
Sure.
Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, I, I, I would simply, you know, comment as I did at the last meeting where we had a hearing on the issue, that, um, in my opinion, I define the public as the residents of Wisteria, as the secondary access does not provide, uh, additional protection for the public beyond. That at the time the development was approved, the boards did their diligence and imposed conditions that they felt were in the best interest of a public acquiring property there. That at this point, for me personally, this is a matter of the, the right of residents to direct their property, their future. Anyone taking title in the development, should the board vote to eliminate the condition and allow the applicant to go to the township committee to vacate the easement, anyone taking title after that would take title with notice that that road's not there and therefore not entitled to any additional protection from it. The applicants obtained the signature of everyone in the development. They are of like mind to forego the, the condition. And, and so I support the application and I would be a yes vote.
Okay, and are there any other comments from board members before we do go to vote? Okay, so, uh, yes. Mr. Demergian?
Yeah, I just wanna sort of, first of all, I appreciate both arguments. They're both very good arguments. And it's, again, as simple as this may seem, it's, it's, it's a difficult vote.
I understand.
Um, I see the emergency access road that was, um, designed or used. It, it, um, it seems like they, they went halfway. So it doesn't, it's not, wasn't the perfect solution. It seemed like sort of a, a way to get out of the access road, bringing an access road from another location. So it's not the best. However, I'm having, um, some issues with the, the reasoning for, for eliminating the condition. I don't know that the applicant made a strong enough argument. So I'm leaning towards a no is my comment.
Paul, my only response to that, my o- my only response to that would be, and again, this is my opinion, is, is that I, I make no judgment as to the value of the applicant's reasoning for wanting to eliminate it. It could be the erection of a statue in their likeness. It could be a squash court. It could be a swimming pool. I, I make no determination based on the desire of the applicant's use of the property after vacating the easement or eliminating the condition. Only whether or not it falls within what I believe should be the right of the residents to determine how their property is used and how their title passes in the future and the expectations of people that live there. So I would, I would ask for us to look beyond the reason the applicant wants to eliminate the condition and simply look at whether or not they should be allowed to eliminate the condition.
Ms. Manduk, do you have any comments at this point?
No, Madam Chair, but I did review the video.
Okay.
And you signed the certification?
I signed the affidavit.
Okay.
And same for the record, same with Ms. Masstrangelo.
Well, let, let me go.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Okay, are there any other comments from members? Mr. Seville?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, I will judge the, the, the arguments made by the, the applicant. And quite frankly, I thought, um, they could be a lot stronger. Um, you know, and I thought the vice chair did an excellent job of, of, you know, presenting, not just, you know, uh, reiterating the Cohen case, but a great summation of the, the past two meetings. Um, however, I, I will have to decide, uh, uh, align with the applicant in the sense that um, I'm on the side of, of aligning with the fact that, um, you know, th- these are residents. They came together. The, the twelve, uh, s- uh, signatures are an indication of what I would deem as the public as well. Um, and they arguably have, in my eyes, uh, you know, have, have and are willing to, uh, direct their own future. Um, and because of that, I think I can, uh, would align with kind of vacating, um, you know, the, uh-
Eliminate the condition requiring-
Vacating the condition, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments before I have a comment? Mr. Aorio?
Yeah, just had a question. How do we ensure that someone buying a home there, that, you know, they're made aware of this through title? Whose responsibility and where would that, or that lie? How do we, you know?
I mean, the, 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 the record, when they research title to acquire a property should show that they're, that, that, that the easement. By the way, we can only eliminate the requirement of the condition. The township committee must actually vacate the easement and record a document which would appear in the chain of title.
If, the, that is correct. If the township committee voted, if the board voted to eliminate the condition requiring the emergency access easement, and then if the township committee voted to vacate the easement, that would be a recorded document in the chain of title.
And anyone taking title post would be unnoticed, based on our notice title system in New Jersey, that that once existed and no longer exists.
And if the board wanted to, you could impose a condition saying that that document, if the township committee's gonna do that, the document would have to have a, maybe a one paragraph recital of a slight history of that there was this emergency access easement and now it's no more.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments?
Can I ask for a clarification on, um, this may seem kinda silly, but what exactly? The original request from what I remember was to vacate the maintenance. Then, was that switched to vacating the easement?
Correct.
Yes, it was.
Just for clarification.
He did switch.
He wants the easement.
Okay, it's not just a-
He wants the condition requiring the emergency access easement eliminated.
Okay, cause was it initially a, a maintenance issue?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was a maintenance.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just, um, was remiss in arguing as well, that I also considered that a public safety element is not just the residents, but the firefighters and the emergency technicians that will be, if there is a fire, putting themselves in harm's way, that they are a very important member of public safety and the public in this balancing act. So, while we may have 12 residents that signed off, it would be interesting to see how many firefighters would sign off, but...
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Oreo?
Excuse me, I would just say that, you know, I appreciate you getting the signatures and whatnot, um, and I would say that, you know, I agree with Mr. Bowman, it's not necessarily us to judge what he, what they prepare to do with their property and what the reasoning is, and I agree with Ms. Mastrangelo, and I think someone raised that point in the last meeting, that the public is more than just residents of that street, putting a firefighter in a precarious situation. I just have a hard time betting against what our fire chief tells us, uh, for public safety, so, that's just the, you know, that's the one thing that I find it hard to focus on.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, um, I'll just conclude by saying, I, I am still opposed to the vacation of, uh, pardon me, eliminating the condition to vacate the easement. I agree with Ms. Mastrangelo and Mr. Oreo, that we have to take a broader view of the public in this, and I, I have a difficult time going, um, against, what's probably not a good word, but not fully in favor, and, you know, I'm not expressing myself too well. But I am, I, I value what the fire chief says. The fire chief has a lot of experience, and I feel that I am compelled to agree with what the fire chief recommends, so I will be voting to, um, deny the elimination of the condition. So, at this point, I think we've all, those who's have spoken want to speak, those who want to speak have spoken, and, uh, I think everybody on the dais is now eligible to vote.
That's correct.
That is correct. The appropriate signatures have been given to Mr. Schley, from those who watched the video, so, at this point, who wants to make a motion?
Just so everyone understands, there's eight people. What the municipal land use law says, if, for argument's sake, there was a motion to grant the application and eliminate the condition, that motion would have to garner five votes.
Five votes.
A tie is a denial of a motion.
It's valid, yes.
So, my suggestion is that someone who's in favor of eliminating the condition, make a motion to grant the application, to eliminate the condition, and vote on that motion.
Yes, that's what I thought. All right, so, who would like to make that motion? Who would like to second that motion?
Madam Chairwoman, I'll make a motion to, to grant the application, eliminating the condition.
Okay, thank you. Uh, who wants to second this?
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Manduk. Roll call, Mr. Schley.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Demergian? Ms. Manduk?
Yes.
Ms. Mastrangelo?
No.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Oreo?
No.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Uh, Chairwoman Pedici?
No.
Okay, it's a tie, four-four vote, the motion fails, the application is denied.
Okay, the next case is... Fellowship Senior Living Incorporated, Block 9301, Lot 33, 33 Ellen Row, Elimination and Modification of Conditions, PB 13 Dash 006A. Good evening, Ms. Smith, how are you?
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. It's good to see everyone again. For the record, my name is Jennifer Phillips Smith. I'm an attorney at Gibbons PC, and I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Fellowship Village. As you all know, Fellowship is a life plan community, uh, that is located at 8,000 Fellowship Road, Block 3901, Lot 33. We are here specifically this evening seeking a modification of conditions that were previously imposed in a resolution that this board adopted on October 18th of 2016. At the time of the adoption of that resolution, Fellowship was seeking permission to make certain modifications to its campus, uh, including what's relevant today, a theater. That theater was, uh, contemplated at the time to be an amenity for the residents of the community, and also to be open to the public. At the time that the board approved the construction of the theater and other amenities, it imposed several conditions, and specifically, for the record, those conditions are part of Condition Number Six, Number 10, Number 22, and by reference, um, Exhibit A6, which was attached to the resolution. In short, the board imposed conditions that limited the use of the theater to only 12 productions per year, with a total of only 48 performances. It also imposed a condition that, uh, prohibited any productions from starting before 7:00 PM on weekdays. Now, we believe, based on the, the record that was from before, before the board at that time, that those conditions were imposed based on a concern that there might not be enough parking, and that the parking demand might be too great, and it might cause problems, uh, within the community and within the neighborhood in general. Uh, but we're happy to report that the theater has now been constructed. It is open, which is certainly a change in circumstance from the prior application when it was only contemplated. And now that the theater's open, we're happy to report that they have been very successful in bringing in quality arts programming. We're also happy to report that the concerns about parking have not materialized. Uh, so you will hear this evening from Mr. Hart, who is our theater manager, to explain a little bit about the theater, and how it's been open, and what we've been doing. You'll also hear from Gary Dean, who is a, a traffic engineer, who went out and did parking counts during recent performances, including one performance that was, uh, I believe, 89% sold out, so pretty close to sold out for the performances there, and to report on what the parking looked like during that performance, and to present the findings of his report, which showed that there was actually a relatively low use of the parking lot in front of the theater. But I will let Mr. Dean present those facts. Uh, we did provide notice of this hearing and provided an affidavit, uh, to the board in advance of this evening's public hearing.
Thank you. Uh, did anybody go to Fellowship Village? Uh, I just wanna make sure, you know, if you went to Village.
I did, Madam Chair. I did, uh, actually for the most recent production, and I observed no parking concerns whatsoever when I drove through the parking lot.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Manduk. Anybody else? Okay, um, do you have all your witnesses here tonight?
We do.
Okay, so why don't we have them, bring them up to the table, and we'll swear everybody in.
Excellent. Would you prefer I stay up here or join at the table?
You should stay there.
Just stay there, Ms.
Perfect.
Okay.
Everyone stand up who knows they're gonna testify. Raise your right hand, and do you, Paul, swear or affirm that the testimony you're gonna give tonight, will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Yes.
Starting over here, can you identify yourself, spell your last name, and give your relationship to the applicant or the board, as the case may be?
My name is Scott Hart, last name is H-A-R-T, and I am the manager of the Fellowship Cultural Arts Center.
Gary Dean, D-E-A-N, traffic consultant for Fellowship Village.
David Bannish, board planner.
Uh, David Schley, township planner.
There we go.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, where, how would you like to begin, Ms. Smith?
Our first witness will be Mr. Hart, our theater manager.
Go ahead, please.
Sure. Mr. Hart, I know you just indicated while you're being sworn in, but for the record, what is your position with Fellowship Village?
I am the manager of the Mitchell and Anseminsky Theater at the Fellowship Cultural Arts Center.
And when did you join Fellowship Village?
I started in August of 2019.
Prior to joining Fellowship Village, what was your experience with theater and theater management?
Uh, I've basically been in theater all my life. I started as a child at the age of 12, uh, as an actor through my teens, twenties, and early thirties. Um, I then turned more into directing and producing. Um, I produced on Broadway. I am a Drama Desk and Tony Award nominee for the production I produced on Broadway. I produced national tours. Uh, I've acted as, uh, artistic consultant to the Sugarloaf Performing Arts Center in New York City, uh, up in New York State. Um, I was artistic director for the Evergreen Dinner Playhouse, which was a large professional 500-seat dinner theater. Um, and just prior to joining Fellowship Village, I was, uh, entertainment project manager for Norwegian Cruise Lines, where I was responsible for, uh, the production and installation of Broadway musicals on some of their newer and larger ships.
Thank you.
Now, I mentioned during the, uh, opening that the theater is now open. Can you tell us a little bit about when it opened and what type of productions you've had at Fellowship Village?
We opened in 2019, um, with, uh, it was Trilogy Repertory Theater's production of Brigadoon. Uh, we have a few in-house companies, Trilogy Repertory Theater being our in-house community theater. They do two productions a year. Um, we have American Theater Group, which is our professional company. They do two productions a year. Um, after Brigadoon, I believe we had, uh, Centenary Stage Company, which comes in occasionally. They did Nonsense. Um, we also had, uh, the New Jersey Ballet and the New Jersey Festival Orchestra, and that took us up to about March 2020, when obviously COVID hit and we shut down.
And have you since reopened?
We opened, reopened in, uh, September of 2021, almost two years after COVID started, and, uh, we reopened with a national tour of Driving Miss Daisy, which played in September.
And you've been holding performances since that time, correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Now, those performances are open to both residents and members of the public, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Now, back in 2016, when the board approved the construction of the theater, it placed certain restrictions on the number of public performances. And just to summarize briefly, in Exhibit A6, it limited those performances to no more than 12 productions per year, with 48 performances, and indicated it would be, uh, two productions likely by trilogy, two by the light opera, and eight other productions in a year.
Okay, and when you say Exhibit A6, that was Exhibit A6 that was incorporated...
Correct.
And became part of the resolution of the board, which was adopted on...
October 18th of 2016.
Right, adopted on October 18th, 2016, consisting of 60 pages without the attachments.
That's correct. That is absolutely correct. And I specifically was referring, there's, it, it, this theme was mentioned in a few conditions, and I believe it was Six, 10, 22, and then those conditions referenced Exhibit A6, which was attached to the resolution itself. So, in talking about those conditions, uh, how in practice has that worked out with your, with scheduling at the theater?
Um, according to the restrictions, we're allowed to do, um, one ticketed production a month, up to six performances for each ticketed production. Um, however, depending on the group that comes in, we don't always do six performances. Uh, to give you an example, um, when we have the New Jersey Symphony Orchestra in, or Festival Orchestra in, they come in once a year. It's usually January 1st. It's a big New Year's Day concert that they do, which is a ticketed production open to the public. Um, and once that performance is done, the rest of January, the theater is dark, since that is our only ticketed production. Um, when Trilogy Repertory is there, they do, um, four to six productions, or performances during their month, but then we may bring in the New Jersey Ballet, where the New Jersey Ballet traditionally does two performances, like a Saturday evening and a Sunday matinee, and then, once that's completed, the rest of the month, the theater is closed.
And it's closed not for lack of performance availability, but because of the condition of the board, is that correct?
Exactly.
Now, if this restriction were removed, and you were able to have performances more than 12 productions of year, a year, what types of other performances or companies or, um, variety of arts would you be able to attract?
Uh, probably the best example I can give you is, um, with some of the national tours that are going out around the country. Now, of course, our theater couldn't handle a national tour like Wicked, or Phantom of the Opera, or Les Mis, but we can handle some of the tours like A Million Dollar Quartet, um, or, or The Rat Pack, smaller, smaller musicals. And very often, when the scheduling department of these musicals, uh, put their schedule together, they will find that they have gaps in their travel schedule. So, they will contact theaters such as ours, you know, six or eight weeks out, and say to us, "We're gonna be going through your town, traveling from 1.8 to 0.8, we would love to stop by and offer you two performances at a discounted rate. How about it?" And unfortunately, if we have already had a ticketed production that month, we have to turn them down. That's just one example.
And what is the maximum number of seats that you have in the theater?
Um, it's a very versatile theater. We can do different seating layouts, but the maximum number of seats is 257.
Do you offer shows on both weekdays and weekends?
Uh, yes, we do. Traditionally, we're, we do, uh, Thursday through Sunday, 99% of the time, it's Saturday, Sunday, uh, Saturday and Sunday.
Right. And which shows tend to have the higher ticket sales, weekdays or weekends?
Weekends.
On the days with the higher ticket sales, do you have any special parking protocol?
Um, what we usually do is our ticketing system allows us to see who has purchased tickets. We are able to see how many are residents, how many are gentle, general public, so we can put this, the residents aside, knowing that they would be walking in, and from there, we can decide how many cars we can anticipate. And if we feel it's going to be a very busy evening, we have a parking attendant that we bring on, and he will take care of the parking in the parking lot during those performances.
And by that, they, would the parking attendant direct people to available spaces?
They direct people and show them where to park throughout the parking lot.
Now, when the theater was constructed, the board approved the construction of a grass paver area in the front oval for overflow parking. Um, in your time at Fellowship, how many times do you think you've seen that grass area used for parking?
Since August of 2019, I've seen it used three times.
And during any of those times, was it close to full?
Never even close to full.
As you will hear next, Mr. Dean was retained by Fellowship to perform parking counts during two specific theater productions. He counted two performances, one on December 18th of 2021, and one on January 1st of 2022. Uh, can you tell the board about those performances and the ticket sales on those days?
Sure. The, uh, December 18th was Centenary Stage. They did, uh, production of A Christmas Carol, and I believe the attendance was 117 for that performance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the other performance was, uh, January 1st, New Year's Day, which was New Jersey Festival Orchestra, which was one of our biggest sellers of the year, and I believe that one was at 229 out of 257 seats.
Great. Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Hart, before we bring up Mr. Dean to talk more specifically about parking.
Dot a couple i's and cross a couple t's.
Sure.
So, Exhibit A6, which is attached to the resolution...
Mm-hmm.
As I read the resolution, that is incorporated by reference in Condition Number 10.
10.
Can you just check to make sure you agree with that? Condition Number 10...
Correct.
...addresses use of the multipurpose room in theater, limited to trilogy, light opera, and other professional organizations, and to the number of productions set forth in Exhibit A6. And it states, "Use of the multipurpose room slash theater shall be limited to trilogy, light opera, and other professional organizations, and to the number of productions that's set forth in Exhibit A6, a copy of which is attached here too, incorporated by reference." And then I put the source of a lot of these conditions, just in case something like this happened, that we'd know what the purpose was, and it says in parentheses, "Suggested by the board and agreed to by the attorney at the time..."
Mm-hmm.
"...during the November 13th, 2014, hearing session, at which time Exhibit A6 was entered into evidence." So, this one doesn't exactly, um, say why, but specifically, as I read your application, you want that condition eliminated in total.
Correct, so that the...
And, and then, there's a February 16, 2016, parking management program...
Correct.
...which is attached to the resolution.
Correct.
As I read the conditions, that's incorporated by reference in Condition 22...
Correct.
...and referenced in Condition Number Six.
Correct.
So, Condition Number Six is titled, "No weekday public paid performances in multipurpose rooms slash theater prior to 7:00 PM." And the condition says, "There shall be no weekday, parentheses, Monday through Friday, end parentheses, public paid performances in the multipurpose rooms slash theater before 7:00 PM." And then, in parentheses, "This condition was agreed to by Gary Dean during the July 7, 2015, hearing session..."
Mm-hmm.
"...dash, intended to keep performances out of, quote, 'peak hour,' end quote, 'traffic times, superseded by Paragraph Six of the parking management program as provided or below." So, if you look at Paragraph Six...
Correct.
...of the parking management program on page two of that attachment, it says, "For particular theater events that are open to the general public..." ticketed theater events that are open to the general public, doors shall open for attendee admission no earlier than 7:00 PM on weekdays. For these events," pardon me, "cast, production, crew, and musicians shall be directed by the production company to park in the Health Center lot. Signage will indicate theater entrance through the lower employee entrance directly to the theater." And then, Condition Number 22 is titled Parking Management Program dated February 16, 2016, and it states, "The applicant shall implement and abide by the Parking Management Program dated February 16, 2016, a copy of which is attached here too, and incorporated by reference herein." And then, in parentheses, "This condition was agreed to by Brian Lawrence during the June 7, 2016 hearing session, end paren." And you want the applicant's request us to eliminate Conditions 6 and 22, is that correct?
To eliminate 6, 10, and to modify 22 only to the extent it touches upon the theater. The rest of the parking management plan, we're not looking to.
Okay, so what paragraph would be modified in the February 16, 2016 Parking Management Program?
I believe it's the sixth paragraph down, but let's see if my memory is correct.
One I read, the ticketed-
Correct. That's correct.
So that, Paragraph 6 of the Parking Management Program dated February 16, 2016 is proposed to be eliminated.
Correct.
Which would modify the program, which would modify Condition 22, correct?
That's all correct.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for doing that.
I'll start. I have a couple of questions, Mr. Hart.
Sure.
In reference to the applicant, the proposal to eliminate Condition Number 6, I don't know if you could answer this, but then, there could be performa- matinee performances if the condition were eliminated, is that correct?
Are you talking about during the week, or just the weekend?
Yes.
Yes.
During the week, there could be-
There could be.
-not only evening performances, but matinee. Is that, and is that something that has been anticipated?
To be honest with you, that's something that has not been anticipated. Our matinees are usually on the weekends. Weekday matinees, in my experience, are, do not sell well in this area.
But to answer a question, that, if that-
If that were eliminated, you could have weekday matinees.
We could have weekday matinees, yes.
Okay. The second question is, have the residents been informed that, about this application, that there might be more traffic of cast and crew, and more people going in and out, and just much more activity at the Cultural Arts Center if these conditions were eliminated?
Oh, yes, they're, they're, all of the residents are aware of it. We have some of the residents here, actually, and they are aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for board members?
When you say residents, are you talking of residents of Fellowship or neighbors?
I'm talking both. I'm talking both. I'm talking neighbors as well as residents.
Let me ask a question. The notice that went out, went to the neighbors within 200 feet, correct?
That's correct.
There was no requirement to notice their residence.
Correct.
And the way I interpreted your question, and I could have been wrong, was since, I know by statute, they had to notice the neighbors within 200 feet, I interpreted your question-
I was really towards the residents, whether there would be all of this additional in and out, cast and crew, cars coming in and out during the day. Yes. Mr. DeMergens, you have a question?
No, you clarified.
Okay.
Or I'm not sure if I clarified you, or you clarified me, but it's clear now.
Any other members have questions to Mr. Hart?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Mallon.
How many spots are allocated towards the theater itself?
Mr. Dean, actually, we'll go into detail as to the number of spots and their location. We have a diagram that was part of the traffic report.
And one other one, are there shuttles for the residents to go back and forth? Or do some residents drive through the performances?
Very few residents drive. We have a handful, maybe three or four, that live in the outer houses that'll drive in, but 99% walk, since they're right there within the complex.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Rowan?
I did, ma'am. Mr. Hart, how do you advertise or promote productions that are open to the public now? And should the condition be eliminated, would it change the frequency or method of promotion to kind of get the word out to the public that these are, these performances are available?
I don't think anything would change. Right now, we do newspaper advertising. We hit the newspapers a certain number of times based on a production, and a lot of our advertising is through social media outlets.
Ms. Smith, Frenchel?
Yes. Did you, with, so you opened in 2019?
Yes.
And then you were closed in 2000?
March of 2020.
2020, you reopened in September of 21.
That's correct.
With the Omicron variant, which hit, I guess, in winter, when some of these tallies were made for traffic. Were you, did you remain open the entire time?
Yes, we do have COVID protocols in the theater. We follow all of the protocols set forth by the New Jersey Theater Alliance, Actors Equity Association of America, which is the actors' union of the United States, and as well as the CDC. So any patron that comes to Fellowship Village, before they even enter the building, they do have to show proof of COVID vaccination, whether it be by card or an app on their phone. They have to show us an ID, so we can match it up to those COVID cards. And masks must be worn at all times within the Performing Arts Center.
Did you notice between September 21 and January 1, 22, a drop-off in attendance because of the variant?
Actually, no. I mean, when we first opened in September, it was very low, I think because people were just getting used to with the pandemic and going back to the theater. But we have been progressively growing since then, and our audiences seem to be getting a little more comfortable with attending.
So from September, but particularly in that period, from September when you reopened to December and January when you did, when I was the traffic engineer or consultant as well, you didn't notice any drop-off in that attendance too? Do you have numbers for September 2?
Not with me, I don't have numbers, but I have, we have progressively grown since we've reopened. We reopened with very low numbers, and I mean understandably so, because people were nervous to go back to the theater. But just like Broadway, things seem to, as people are getting more and more comfortable, and understanding of the pandemic, and vaccinations, and boosters, and so forth and so on, I believe people are becoming a little more comfortable with it. And understanding our protocols at the theater that we are very adamant about enforcing, I think they have become very, they rely on the fact that we will make sure that they're protected.
If you don't mind, if I ask just one follow-up question. So the parking counts that were taken on January 1st of 2022 with that performance, you mentioned that was one of your largest shows of the year.
That was one of our largest, yeah.
And do you remember the percentage of seats that were sold that night?
It's around 89%, I believe.
You said 229 attended out of 257.
Correct.
So that comes to 89%, you say?
Approximately.
And in the December 1, 18th, was 117 out of 257.
Right.
Correct.
Mr. Seville?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I understand, so the condition here is that, so it's up to 12 productions or 48 performances.
That's correct.
Have you had 48 performances per year, or come close to that?
No. Because, as I said before, different groups that we bring in, although they're, according to the restrictions, they can do six performances, a lot of our productions just don't do six performances. The New Jersey Ballet will only do two, New Jersey Festival Orchestra will only do one. So although, according to the agreement, we're allowed to do 48 performances in a 12-month period, we have not done that as of yet.
But we, just to clarify, part of that is because of the number of production limitation, is that correct?
Right, the limitations that were put on us.
So what, what do you think would happen if the condition of the 12 performances, or 12 productions was removed, but the 48 performances were still maintained?
I think we're seeking to have both of those restrictions lifted. Okay.
What if you got one of them, essentially, 48, as opposed to both?
Well, see, not every production that we have available to us is able to do six performances. And that's a problem, especially when, when I, going back to the conversation I had about the national tours, you know, they'll say, "We can give you one or two performances." And we hate to turn that down, because that just varies our programming for the community. But again, it's not going to be a full six performances.
So what I'm saying, if the elimination of that 12-production cap was, you know, if that was eliminated, that would overcome, you know, any challenge that you might have when, you know, these big-name productions come through.
Exactly.
Just on the 48 productions, though, that still would only allow roughly six days out of the entire month, is that still true?
Yes.
Can you talk a little louder?
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess it's not picking up. It would still, if you only had 48 productions in, sorry, performances in a year, that still would only allow the theater to be used roughly six times a month.
Six times a month. And then the rest of the time, we're dark.
Thanks.
Question, other questions for board members? I'm, I'll, before I go professionals. Okay, Mr. Banish?
My question, I think, is along the lines of Mr. Seville's, and it's kind of like, what should the board expect to see if they eliminate these conditions in terms of an increase of activity at the site? When, when you talked about the tours, like you talked about the smaller musicals, that was by way of example.
Right.
One question that comes to mind for me about that is, how often do those opportunities arise? And the second part of that question is, what other opportunities arise? If it's not a musical tour, like, what else can the board expect to see in terms of activity happening up there by way of theater, or performance art, or whatever the case may be?
Sure. One of the things that we would love to be able to do with, with my connections and colleagues in, on Broadway, one of the things that we would love to be able to offer the community is, very often, a lot of these Broadway stars have their own cabarets that they do in New York City at some of these large cabaret venues. Well, instead of the community having to travel into New York to see these cabarets, I have an opportunity to bring some of these Broadway stars out to the Village and perform their cabarets at the Village. That would be a one-off, maybe one, one Saturday evening, or a Saturday evening and a Sunday matinee. Those are the type of things that we would like to be able to do in addition to our regular ticketed productions. The tour, the tour thing doesn't happen a lot, but it has happened. You know, very often, if I have a call and approach a company and say, "We would like to have your show come into our theater, what is your availability?", they'll tell me what their availability is, but if we've already had a ticketed production that month, and that's the only time they're available, then I can't even pursue it any further than that.
Okay. I'm now going to be opening up the, for questioning of Mr. Hart from members of the public. Again, this is questioning of the testimony that he's presented. Public comment will be at the end of the application. So I now open for public questioning of Mr. Hart about his testimony. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. Any further comments, Mr. Hart?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Smith, next up is Mr. Dean. Mr. Dean, I know we've seen you many times, but for the record, would you please give us your qualifications and licenses?
Certainly. My pleasure to see you all again. Gary Dean, I'm Principal of Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers headquartered in Somerville, New Jersey. I've been practicing traffic engineering and appearing before this board or your predecessors regularly since probably 1985 or '06. My license remains in good standing as a professional engineer in New Jersey. And aside from representing private clients and applicants such as Fellowship, our firm also represents a number of municipalities, assisting them with traffic-related issues. I also served as a traffic consultant to your Board of Education, and had done a lot of work next door on Ridge High School in my career. But other notable projects in the community include the YMCA, obviously Fellowship Village, the Visiting Nurse Association, Riverwalk, among many others.
Thank you. Does board members have any question to Mr. Dean's qualifications? Our professionals, or members of the public, do you have any questions to Mr. Dean's qualifications? So I now qualify you as a traffic consultant.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Excellent. Mr. Dean, you prepared a report that was submitted with this request to modify conditions dated March 14, 20-
Microphone.
It's right here. There we go. Mr. Dean?
Great.
There we go. There we go, perfect.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Dean, you prepared a traffic report dated, sorry, a letter dated March 14, 2022, which summarized your findings following counts of parking during two different theater productions. If you could go through for the board what you did to prepare that report and the findings, please.
Certainly. As Mr. Drill summarized, this board spent many months, many hours concerned about parking at Fellowship Village as related to the proposed theater. And it came on the heels of some other sensitive parking-related applications in the township.
Nice way of putting it.
And, and, and as a result, we were certainly put through our paces in order to acknowledge those concerns and to ensure that the community, particularly Fellowship, would not be left with a parking problem. And as you've heard read, that there were certain conditions, the purpose of which was to limit the potential exposure to either the residents of Fellowship Village, or the community at large, from a potential parking problem. I'm pleased to say, now that we're many years beyond those hearings, and we, and the theater's been built and operated, that we've had an opportunity to do a little litmus test, to see, you know, how did we do? Were we, were we good in our collective planning efforts regarding the application? And so, I consulted with Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Hart. We identified performances that were, I'll say, ramping up and approaching full capacity of the theater, notwithstanding the emergence from COVID. And two such performances were identified, that being one, as you've heard, in mid-December of 2021, where we had an attendance of, I want to get my attendance figures correct, well, it was 31% with, I believe it was 100 and-
17.
Thank you. Problem is, too many numbers, and I, and I forget them. Where we were at about 31% of our occupancy limit. But then, January 1st, and even though it was New Year's Day, every assurance was, this will be our maximum, this will be a near sellout. And there were 229 tickets sold, which represents, Mr. Hart was correct, 89.1% of the theater capacity, meaning we could only fit 28 more people. So it's, it's as close to a full performance as, as I think in the timeline as we could review. In our report, we identified how many cars were parked, and we segregated into two components. And for those of you that may be familiar or recall the original presentation, the main parking in Fellowship Village is divided into two components, what I'll call the oval, which is the upper level where the theater is. And it's an oval because of its shape.
Mr. Dean, just to your-
Certainly.
Kippee was the only one here.
Okay. Everyone's new, fine.
Right, so when you say, no one recalls-
I know, Mr. Drill, you do, but Madam Chair, of course.
I don't count.
If I can assist, then, if you have Mr. Dean's report in front of you, if you look at the last page of the report, the colored drawing here, I think, Mr. Dean, you can refer to that as to where the-
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
-parking lots are located.
There is a northerlymost parking area in the shape of an oval, and that's how we've referred to it. That is, that is a circular entrance that leads directly to the entrance of Fellowship Village and the theater. Within that oval area are two components of parking. There is fixed paved parking around the outer edge or perimeter. And then, recognizing the concerns of parking that came through this process, the applicant proposed, and the board concurred to, we don't want to over-pave if we don't need to. So what we used were a stabilized grass paver system, which is rated for tractor-trailer use, not that we had that, but I just want to underscore its durability. And that is along the interior of the grassed oval. And the idea was to keep it as natural-looking as possible. It's stabilized underneath the grass with interlocking plastic rings and gravel and soil, so it's very sturdy. But its intent is, in the event we had higher attendance events, and there was a potential for more parking, that grass paver system could be used. And as you've heard from Mr. Hart, it has only been used three times. heard from Mr. Hart, it has only been used three times. And in our observations, there were very few, I think it was only six vehicles that parked on the grass pavers. All of the other parking was accommodated within the paved parking areas. The second primary parking area within Fellowship Village is south of the oval and south of the theater, and it's closer to the assisted living and nursing components, essentially where staff parks as well as visitors to those components. As part of the parking management plan, the staff, the crew for theater have all been directed to park in that lower area, so that we've left the oval available because it's close to the theater entrance for our guests. And in going through, and even though we were at eighty-nine percent attendance capacity, on the busy day on Saturday, January first, we only used fifty-five percent of the parking in the oval. As we looked at the campus overall, we were at a much lower occupancy, and principally that may be associated with the day. But I really want to center the discussion on the oval because that's where the patrons need to park. And the fact that we're at eighty-nine percent capacity and only using roughly half the parking, I think underscores the fact that this has not been an operational problem for Fellowship Village and certainly not the community.
Do you know the breakdown between, of those ticket sales on January one, how many were Fellowship senior living residents versus people driving from off-site coming in? Because if you had a large percentage of Fellowship residents, then you'd have a low percentage of people parking in the oval.
Understood.
Personally, if you had a whole bunch of people coming from the outside in cars, maybe that number of three point oh eight would go closer to one or two.
I'll have to defer to Mr. Hart for that answer. I don't know the answer to that.
We can ask Mr. Hart to come back up to answer that at the conclusion of Mr. Dean's testimony.
Yes, thank you.
And so even as we then, as engineers will do, we had eighty-nine percent of our sales, if we extrapolate to a sellout event, all two hundred and fifty seats are sold, we came up with a parking demand of seventy-nine parking spaces. And so that would still leave forty-two empty. So roughly a third of our patron parking around the oval at full capacity, and again, subject to Mr. Hart's verification of that ratio of, I'll call it, external patrons to internal or Fellowship patrons, our findings show that the exercise was worthwhile. We wanted to ensure that Fellowship, I'll say, on their trial period, certainly lived up to their representations that the parking management system works and that the theater certainly is an asset to the community, has not proven to be any kind of parking problem or operational constraint. So for that reason, the applicant is seeking to have that condition relieved. That is all I have, unless there are specific questions.
Questions for board members, please?
I just want to clarify, the two hundred and fifty seats sold equates to seventy-nine parking spaces, you said?
Correct.
But again, that's based on extrapolation from the predicate of the eighty-nine percent to fifty-five percent of the oval, not knowing how many residents versus non-residents.
Correct.
But use of two hundred and fifty, it's two hundred and twenty-nine tickets sold on January one.
I understood the question.
No, no. He said, if it had, if they estimated-
Got it.
If it had been at full capacity.
Right. But that's based on whatever mix, the mix was.
Right, that's my point.
Correct.
Whoever the mix was between residents and non-residents.
So to use that is kind of a little misleading, because we don't, not misleading, but we don't know what the basis is, resident versus non-resident.
Sure, I understand. We will get you that information.
Right.
Right. And I'm assuming what you're leading to is that if more performances were had, you would exhaust attendance by residents and subsequent performances would be more likely attended by the public.
That's a question.
Right. That's the question. Well, but that's a question for Mr. Hart, right? That would be a question for Mr. Hart. My question would be, you know, just from a pure car count perspective, what is the capacity of the oval and the grass area for overflow?
Sure.
How many total cars can you park and have site circulation?
A hundred and twenty-one.
A hundred and twenty-one, okay.
And to put that into perspective, just because the math is easy, let's assume that the theater holds two hundred and forty-two people, just not two fifty-seven, and bear with me for a minute. That would mean we could have zero tickets sold to Fellowship people, and again, assuming two people per car, they could all fit around the oval.
Right.
That means a very small percentage, what was the delta, thirteen people, would need to be Fellowship residents so that they wouldn't exceed the capacity of parking.
But is the oval used for people visiting residents that aren't going to the theater?
Good question. It is. And when we did our counts, I couldn't tell whether a car that was parked was someone visiting a resident or someone going to the theater. So if anything, our findings are overly conservative in terms of who's parking in the oval.
But you're, again, your assessment that if you sold out the theater and had two people per car, or you said two hundred, and maybe that was a big visiting day for, it was a Saturday visiting day for families.
Correct.
I mean, what is next, what is next to the oval? I'm not familiar with Fellowship Village. Is that an area of residence?
The oval is flanked by residents around, I'll say, three, well, two of its sides.
Can you direct them to the back page?
I can. So on the last page of the report.
Do you have this so we can display it up on the screen?
We can display it on the small screen.
Okay. Do you have a laser pointer?
For whatever reason.
Mr. Dean, do you have a laser pointer with you?
It's not green, so it won't work on the boards.
I thought you were saying he has a laser pointer.
I don't think it'll, oh, maybe it'll work on that.
You might be tall enough, if you have the old-fashioned, you know, pointer stick, you might be able to stand under it. I think that will work.
Yep.
Okay.
Now we just need Mr. Schleid to work his magic.
Yeah, that's not working, but you got it.
Unfortunately, the laser won't work on the television. So I'll just do my best to describe what you see on the exhibit.
Remember, you're talking to every board member other than Kippee.
Understood. Okay, good. It's behind me. So, north is to the top of this photograph, and it's an aerial picture from Google Earth, as is indicated in the lower left. It's appended to the last page of my March fourteenth report, and it's entitled Fellowship Village Parking Count Locations. What is labeled Lot dash zero zero one, which is the top yellow-hatched portion of the exhibit, is the oval. And it was reconstructed as part of the application. The theater itself is located in the lower left-hand corner, or the southwest corner of Lot zero zero one. And so as it is the front entrance, that perimeter parking, which you'll see is angled to facilitate a one-way counterclockwise design around the oval, allows for paved parking on the stabilized surface. And then on the interior of the oval, that grassed area where the pin is that says Lot zero zero one, that can accommodate vehicles essentially parked, think of it as on the grass, but it's not grass. It won't rut. It is stabilized in that area.
In fact, the fire truck can be supported on that, correct?
Correct. That is the design of those, that grass paver system can accommodate tractor-trailers, fire trucks, things of that nature. Thank you, Mr. Drill. The second lot, as I described, Lot dash zero zero two, in the lower left-hand corner of the exhibit, also outlined in a yellow tone, provides a bigger parking area, and principally it is for the staff and some visitors to the assisted and skilled nursing care components at Fellowship. And that is a bigger lot. I forget the exact number. It is, I have it in our report, a hundred and ninety-seven parking spaces. So one hundred and twenty-one around the oval and one hundred and ninety-seven in what I've described as Lot two, for a total of three hundred and eighteen parking spaces.
Not that it's significant, but do you know the breakdown around the oval between how many paved parking spaces and how many of the-
I do. There are fifty-four grass paver spaces. So that leaves, and it's late at night, my math is miserable, but sixty-seven, thank you, Mr. Lawrence, paved spaces. And then there's also other parking in Fellowship Village, but as shown on the map, you will see there are buildings that extend further to the north, and then in the lower right-hand corner, there are other buildings. I did not include those. That is essentially where there's some, a combination of covered and what I'll call court parking for those residents. So I'll characterize those as not available to the public at large. So that's why we did not study those.
Mr. Dean, I have one follow-up question. In the original resolution, there was an acknowledgement that the ordinance for auditoriums required one space, parking space for every three seats as the ordinance requirement. Your findings on the actual counts, are they consistent with the municipal ordinance that one space would be required for every three seats?
As you'll see from Table two on the bottom of Page two, what we show are the occupancy per vehicle. Now, we did that by knowing the number of parked vehicles and the number of ticket sales to derive that. So again, it's conservative, but you'll see that your ordinance parking ratio at one per three is a pretty good standard. So you need one parking space for each three attendees. And that is fairly traditional for places of public assembly, theater use, even sometimes restaurant use. So I think from a planning exercise, it remains valid.
Other questions for board members and Mr. Dean? Yes, Mr. Demarche?
So, the dates when these studies were done, in my opinion, because it was during COVID. I mean, COVID lasted longer, well, it's still going on. I look around here, I see three people still wearing masks. So in my opinion, the numbers are low. So the question for you is, did you do any other studies at venues during the COVID period where you saw the numbers might be lower than normal? Or in your opinion, are these numbers lower than they would have been if there was not a pandemic?
I just have a question to clarify. Are you saying number of ticket sales?
Well, both. I mean, ticket sales and cars. So that's really the problem I have with all the, I mean, the data. It's because of COVID, people stayed home and-
Sure. I think it's a fair question with one caveat, and that is, they sold two hundred and twenty-nine tickets on January first. They were at eighty-nine percent capacity. So I understand the concern of COVID. I don't know that I have the luxury of waiting for a sold-out performance. Eighty-nine percent, I think, is a good standard. I'll certainly agree that the study in mid-December, one twenty-one, no, what was our ticket sales for that?
One seventeen, I believe.
Thank you. One seventeen out of two fifty-seven is suppressed. But let's do it a little bit differently. Let us take the ratio of one seventeen, and it's worth doing, only because as engineers and planners, we then forecast that. So we had a hundred and seventeen out of two fifty-seven. So we were at forty-six percent. So, and I only had thirty-eight parked vehicles.
But, again, you don't know how many residents versus non-residents. I mean, one could argue that the general public was not comfortable coming to a location of some older individuals that they might jeopardize.
But just hear me out on this. As I then extrapolate to say, that performance was only thirty-one percent occupied, or excuse me, that was the parking, the ticket sales were forty-six percent of capacity. If I then forecast that to full capacity, my parking number would be eighty-three. And the other way I did it, based on January, it came out to seventy-nine. I'm really close. I mean, this facility at full capacity, COVID or not, we're coming up with needing eighty spaces and we have a hundred and twenty-one. So I agree, attendance was suppressed. Fortunately, in January, we were much higher. And subject to verification that it wasn't, of that eighty-nine percent capacity, that eighty-eight of it wasn't Fellowship Village attendees, I think that helps gauge whether this parking date is relevant. So.
I think, Ms. Smith, we really need to see residents versus non-residents and get some feeling of that, probably right now, because I think everybody's question so far is kind of honing in on that issue.
Would you mind if you-
We can ask Mr. Hart. Absolutely.
Right. Or I think before we let Mr. Dean-
But don't let him go yet.
Go, yeah. Before we let him go, I mean, let's kind of, let's root for the arts and for public participation, right? We should want the theater performing, producing, and we should want patrons attending, right? That's good for all of us. It's good for the mind, it's good for the soul. So assuming the theater is operating at capacity and you are extending the run of performances beyond the attendance of residents, so now we're into performances where the public is largely the group attending, you know, does the traffic management plan accommodate that level of attendance?
That's the question.
Right? And because, let's just assume we go to the nth degree, right? And if that's the case, then, Mr. Dean, in your research and your reporting, can the traffic management plan accommodate that level of patronage?
Right.
Well, right now, it will.
Right.
Because you can't have them during a big date.
Yeah, of course, because there's restriction, right?
Right, right.
You know.
Okay, Mr. Hart?
Do you want Mr., oh, I'm sorry, Joe. Do you want Mr. Dean to answer that question first?
I think under that scenario, we then go back to the ordinance requirement at one space for every three. And-
I'm looking at that. So that's on Page twenty-five. And what it says is, the board, I'm just reading from second paragraph on Page twenty-five, "The board finds that the number of parking spaces required for residents, employees, and guests of residents is five hundred and twenty-three." This is overall, "In accordance with Ordinance Section twenty-one dash twelve point three L twelve, the board finds that the number of parking spaces required for the multipurpose room theater is a minimum of eighty spaces, in accordance with the generally applicable site plan ordinance parking requirements set forth in Ordinance Section twenty-one dash twenty-two point one. As to the calculation of the number of spaces required for the multipurpose room slash theater, the board finds, notes and finds, that Ordinance Section twenty-one dash twenty-two point one A one provides as a guide the following calculations." And then it says auditoriums and assembly halls, auditoriums, one space, three seats, times two hundred and forty seats equals eighty spaces. Assembly hall would be one space by a hundred square feet of gross floor area, times fifty-four hundred square foot, would be fifty-four spaces. But then the board says, significantly, however, the determination of the required number of minimum parking spaces does not end with these calculations. It's just the beginning. Because the board then said, "Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-two point one A one provides and explains, quote, 'Since a specific use may generate a parking demand different from those enumerated below in the chart of calculations, documentation and testimony shall be presented to the board as to the anticipated parking demand.'" And that is what happened. The board then took the specific testimony, and that's where we came up with those conditions. So I think that we got to find out, under Mr. Baumann's question, if you had a sold-out performance hypothetically, and it was all outsiders driving in and no residents, what would the parking look like? Eighty-six spaces. And explain. One, sure. Because you can't do it based on three people per vehicle. Because your three people per vehicle was calculated based on whatever split you have now, which we're going to ask Mr. Hart. Understood. So, which is why I went through that other exercise to say, let's say it's a hundred percent outsiders and it's a couple, a husband and a wife, whatever the relationship is, two people per car. Right. We can fit two hundred and forty-two outsiders, each driving, with our parking capacity at a hundred and twenty-one. So that means we only need fifteen people to come from Fellowship Village, and that's- So that means the parking would accommodate it, and the only remaining-
So, that means the parking would accommodate it, and the only remaining question is, would the road network around Fellowship Village accommodate all those cars coming in and coming out during the day rather than in the evening?
And the other uses at Fellowship Village, including residents, guests, you know, those kinds of things.
And I think as you heard from Mr. Hart, and I don't want to speak for him, but there is a certain sequencing of when these events occur that is not coincident with rush hour. You know, people aren't showing up to the theater at 5:00, 5:30.
Well, if that's the case, then you'd want a condition saying that you can't have a performance at that time.
And I think we do.
Right, but you want to eliminate.
Eliminate that.
Oh, as to the time.
Maybe you want to modify it instead of eliminate it. Maybe that's the answer.
Because the condition right now exists that says not before 7:00 p.m.
Right.
But the applicant is looking to have no condition at that time.
Could be anytime.
So, maybe you want to come up with a modification of the condition so it still blocks out weekday rush hour. I think they're working on that.
Maybe we can have Mr. Hart answer the questions that were posed.
When you want to take a five-minute recess and try to see if they can figure something out rather than, you know, do it on the...
Well, I have, yeah, I have no issue with that if you want to take a recess.
Just because I may need to do some more calculations depending on what this next answer is. I phone's out.
On average, we have approximately a third of our audience is residents. Let's speak specifically of the January 1st date. We just looked it up on our ticketing system, and out of the 229 attendees we had that day, 76 were residents, and the rest were outside patrons. Addressing your concern about visitors at the village, one thing you've got to keep in mind is there are various courts. So, the visitors don't always park in the main circle. If their family lives in a court, they will drive around.
They're not talking, I think that they're satisfied with Mr. Dean's response on the number of spaces. I think what they want to make sure there's no problem with is different cars coming in and out if you have a performance during a, quote, "rush hour" for the facility.
Understood.
So, that's what they, that's why I'm suggesting a five or 10-minute recess, so you guys can put your heads together, and Mr. Dean can make, do some sort of calculation.
Before you go there, let's just clarify what they're looking at. Is there concern about traffic impacts on the local road network by lifting the time constraint? Or is it simply, or is it simply the level of activity in the peak hour of activity on the campus?
Let me read the condition.
What are we asking them to go look at?
Condition 6 says, "There shall be no weekday, Monday through Friday, public-paid performances in the multipurpose room/theater before 7:00 p.m." Parenthesis, explanation. The condition was agreed to during the July 7, 2015 hearing session. It was intended to keep performances out of peak hour traffic times. Now, I'm going to look at the resolution. I couldn't tell you, I don't remember off the top of my head if it was peak hour at the village or peak hour off-site, but I will look it up.
I kind of think it's peak hour off-site, and so along those lines, what I, when you guys take your break, Mr. Dean, I think I've heard this kind of testimony from you before. You can pretty much tell us how many vehicles they're adding during the peak hour for an activity like this, now that you've got your ratios established between the residents and non-residents and that sort of thing. Just to give the board a flavor of what kind of an impact you're exerting on the local road network for one of these.
Thank you. I'll take that guidance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask a question before you leave, Mr. Hart. Have you had any complaints on the parking issue during theater?
I have not had one complaint as of yet.
None by the residents?
None.
I guess, you know, they haven't had any performances during the week.
Well, that's true, too.
This is like a...
No, no, that's true. No, I just wanted to know even with the other...
Just to clarify, they have had performances during the week, just not prior to, not before 7:00 p.m.
Not before 7:00 p.m. That's what I meant.
Not during rush hour.
And just to clarify, the performances would start at 7:00, right?
7:30.
7:30. Okay, so that even accounts for...
The house opens at 7:00.
Six, 6:30. Okay, very good. Thank you.
But the condition is they...
Not before 7:00.
Right, for now.
For now, but they want to lift it.
Right, that's why I'm suggesting they take a break and figure it out.
Excellent.
We'll have a 10-minute recess.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Live, please. Okay, thank you.
Where are we?
Where are we? Ms. Smith, why don't you tell us where we are?
Sure, I have two questions for Mr. Dean to answer questions that were raised by the board just before we went into recess. So, Mr. Dean, I know we had a chance to do a little bit more math while we were out there. There was a question asked about whether you could extrapolate what the parking demand may be if there was a greater percentage or perhaps an entire performance that was attended only by members of the public. Have you had a chance to do some of those calculations?
Yes, I did. As the board heard from Mr. Hart, on the day that we had the higher attendance, approximately 30% of the attendees were fellowship residents. And if you recall my testimony, if we had extrapolated for full attendance, I came up with a parking demand of 79. I then took that number and extrapolated it further to assume that 100% of the attendees do not come from Fellowship Village, they come from external. And that parking demand is 113, and we have 121 spaces in the Oval. So, it's right-sized, there's a little bit of free board left over, but I hope that answers your question about that scenario. As to Mr. Banish's question regarding the peak hours, we spent a fair amount of time at the original hearing discussing the unique operations of Fellowship Village in that as a senior community, there really isn't a rush hour per se within the community except for when the staff changes, which they run on a medical shift, so 7 to 3, 3 to 11, et cetera. So, at 3:00 PM is when there is that change for some of the staff, not all, at Fellowship. So, that's their internal peak, but our rush hour as former commuters or, you know, pre-COVID, was generally between 4 and 6 at night, so call it 5 to 6, right? We have people coming off Route 78, going home from their commute. So, that's the traditional rush hour as traffic engineers analyze capacity and things of that nature. So, in terms of what does the theater operation, what impact did it have or does it have on rush hour? It's virtually none, other than unless someone from the production crew or cast, you know, ran out to get a prop or a material or something of that nature, they're there for pre-production during the day and then, you know, rehearsing and dressing and doing whatever they do prior to the performance at 7:30. So, the operation itself of the theater has no effect on rush hour, and I think that was an important original consideration during...
For 7:00 PM?
Correct.
So, the question is, if that condition's eliminated, what time period, in your opinion, if any, would have to be blocked out? For example, if 5 to 6 is the off-site rush hour and 3:00 PM is the onsite rush hour, should there be a condition that you can't have a performance between 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM?
I think 4 would probably be the, or let's say the latest I would recommend a cutoff, if you will, in that the staff shift at 3 is in the lower parking lot and not up at the Oval.
So, the cutoff, so there should be no performances weekday between 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM? That's what you're suggesting?
Six. In other words, if people start arriving, doors open at 7, as you heard from Mr. Hart, you know, if someone shows up a quarter to 7, I don't think that's aggravating your roadway network.
What about a 2:00 PM matinee on a Wednesday?
I think that's fine. I think if that's, you know, a school performance or something of that, you know, they're dismissed from Ridge and they want to go perform at Fellowship, I think that should be encouraged. I don't think that's problematic.
Okay, well, here's where I kind of fall off the track. You have a 2:00 PM matinee, and at that point, the health center, assisted living, all of that, Lot 02 is pretty active. You've got people coming in for appointments, you've got cars going in and out. And that's where the cast and the crew is supposed to park, from what I read, that that's their normal place to park. They may not find enough parking there because of all the people going to the health center and the assisted living and skilled nursing, and they're going to then have to defer to Lot 1, and then Lot 1's going to fill up with cast and crew potentially, and then the patrons will come in, the attendees will come in for the matinee, they may not find enough parking, and then they're going to have to go to the external spaces around the unit. So, I'm just thinking of this bouncing ball, and I could see there would be a lot of people who would like to go to a matinee. Maybe they, for medical reasons, they can't drag at night, and they want to have like a nice lunch and then go and see a matinee. They get out by 4 o'clock, it's maybe dust during, you know, the winter hours. So, it might be something that a lot of people will like to do, like a lot of people like to go to Broadway to go to the Wednesday matinee. So, I guess that's what I'm concerned. If the condition were entirely lifted, you could have performances at any time. So, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, so what I'm asking is, what would the applicant be comfortable with, with a blockout time? If you want to have weekday, weekday, not weekday evening, weekday shows with a blockout, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM? If the applicant is comfortable with that, I think that would coincide with Mr. Dean's testimony and your concern. If they're blocked out, they can't have a performance going between 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM during the week? It can be before?
Well, I would say, what about a 2:00 PM performance?
It would get out by presumably 4:00 PM, no?
Yeah, but I'm not talking about getting out, I'm talking about parking when the Lot 1 is active with people in the skilled nursing coming in and all of that.
So, a blockout between 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM?
So, I can have Mr. Hart clarify and bring him up, but my understanding is that the cast and crew is already there all day. It's not as if they come in the evening, they're already there the whole day today, even with a 7:00 PM performance.
Oh, okay. I was unaware of that. I thought maybe they got, came in like 2, 3 hours before or something like that.
Why don't you get Mr. Hart back up?
Get Mr. Hart back up. Can you tell us, Mr. Hart, the cast and crew typical schedule when, right now for a...
For a 7:30?
For like a performance, a 7:30 performance?
For a 7:30 performance, very often they come in between 5 and 6, as early as that.
Okay, so if that's the case, if you had a 2 o'clock performance, when do you think they'd come in?
Around...
They'd be in around noonish.
There's a lot of activity around noon at the skilled nursing and everything, right?
But one of the things you have to keep in mind is, there's a concern about the shift, the change of shift within the village and having enough parking spots. The cast is already there, you're going to have a change of shift where people are leaving and freeing up spots, and when the new shift is coming in, they're taking up the spots that have been freed up. Also, keep in mind that by, right next to the lower parking lot, there are two courts where we do have some overflow parking, where we can park within those two court lots, which is right there by, on the map, probably you can show them where the court lots are.
So, you're saying that if there were, if you wanted to have a 2:00 PM matinee, the cast and crew would come in around 11:30, 12 o'clock?
To prepare for the show.
There would be sufficient parking in Lot 2 to accommodate them?
The lower lot, and between the lower lot and the overflow lots with the courts right there, there's plenty of parking. I personally have come in that late with some of the casts of the other shows, and we have never had a problem finding a parking space back there.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, would the applicant be comfortable with the blockout? No shows weekday between 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM?
4 to 6 would be preferable, so we, which would be outside of the peak hour that Mr. Dean testified to.
Right, but if you then had a show at 6, people would presumably be getting there before 6, which is during rush hour, if it's 4 to 6?
4 to 7.
So, Board members, instead of eliminating that condition in its entirety, Condition 6 would be modified to say there shall be no weekday, Monday through Friday, public paid performances in the multipurpose room/theater between the hours of 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM? That means they could have them at other times during those weekday, day hours and evening hours.
So, this is Condition 6?
Yes, Condition 6.
And so, what do they gain from that, matinees?
Yes. During the week. During the week, matinees.
There's also the numerical, I mean, competition to have the number...
I understand, we haven't gotten to that yet, we're doing one at a time, this is the easiest one.
One at a time, okay. So, this would allow a 2:00 PM matinee?
That's right.
Okay.
I have a question. This shift change concern, is the shift changing on Saturdays and Sundays as well as Monday through Friday?
Yes.
So, why does this concern not exist seven days a week?
Because there's no off-site rush hour Saturday and Sunday between 4 to 6, as there is during the week, because it's for outsiders coming on.
It's the impact on the traffic in the surrounding area during rush hour?
But if the board wanted to, you could put it, but that's up to the board.
Well, but I, all right, so...
I'm frankly not concerned about Monday through Friday either. I'm trying to understand...
Correct.
I'm not, I would not be in favor of recommending a blockout period on the weekends as well. Certainly not.
There is no blockout period during the weekends.
Understood, but I'm trying to understand...
I think we're trying to understand, are we analyzing internal traffic, accommodation and circulation or external? What I'm hearing is that a production coinciding with a shift change could create conflict internally when cars are trying, staff is trying to move out, new shift is trying to move in, and patrons are coming to the theater. Does the internal site circulation accommodate that level of traffic? I'm thinking, I'm inside the site away from the interface with the public streets, and I'm asking, you know, is that conflict a concern? Or can the internal site circulation network handle a shift change and a production at the same time?
And the answer is yes, and as we look at the exhibit that's behind me, that shift change occurs in the lower parking level, number 2.
Thank you.
And the theater activities and the public is all in the upper level, and those two remain segregated, so...
The critical function that site circulation provides for staff, aides, family members is accommodated even at the same time as a production is happening and patrons are arriving internally, externally, and parking for theater.
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Dean testified that, quote, "peak hour traffic times," that the condition referred to were the outside...
Were external, okay, understood.
Because the concern was outsiders coming in, not insiders walking.
And Ms. Manduk, it's, the concern was during rush hour weekday?
Okay, so, look, Condition 6 is easy because they've consented to it, and even if some board members wouldn't have that restriction, they've consented to it, that would be unanimous.
I'm just struggling because I'm at this place, I'm at the premises constantly, and I've never seen a car move, let alone a traffic concern. And I'm not trying to be cute or facetious, so I want to make sure we're not requesting a condition that is...
But again, we're not, they have a more restricted condition right now.
I understand, but if the request is that we lift it entirely...
But if you just lift it like partially and leave this thing in, then they find out there's no problem, they'll come back in another year. But if you lift it in total...
I'm trying to avoid the comeback in another year.
I understand, but if you lift the thing in total and then there's a problem?
I understand, I understand. I'm just struggling with making sure we're not imposing, albeit a lesser restriction, and having everybody come back a year from now.
Why don't you go to Condition number 10?
And Mr. Seville has a concern about that condition, which he has voiced already.
Right, because Condition number 10 is the one that incorporates by reference Exhibit A6. And that limits it, boy, to 12 productions per year. And up to 12 productions a year or up to 48 performances maximum. And then it says trilogy, two productions up to six each, total of 12. Light opera, two productions up to six performances each, total of 12. Other productions, eight up to three performances each, or 24 performance maximum. So, you guys can talk about that one.
So, I think everybody on this board is certainly supportive of the arts, and I think we, you know, I personally, maybe I should just speak for myself, I think we should certainly expand, you know, the number of performances. I think the production number seems really low and somewhat arbitrary at this point. You know, I was just quickly doing the math, I mean, even if the Fellowship Village only hosted performances on the weekends, you know, there are 52 weekends a year, and so if they had one performance on a Saturday and one performance on a Sunday, that's 104. You know, I'm not even talking about how many we, they could potentially have during the week. So, I think even the, not only is the production number very low, but I think the performance number is also very low. You know, if we're in agreement that we want to maintain a performance number, I believe it absolutely should be increased, but that's to say, do we even want to maintain a number to begin with? So, I pose it that way and would love to kind of hear the rest of the board discuss that.
What does the board feel about the lift, increasing the cap on performance?
Or eliminating Condition number 10 in its entirety?
I would be in favor.
Yeah, I think that, you know, yeah, I agree with Mr. Seville that it's a very low number and that obviously this is a very nice facility for the community. And given that we have a condition for the peak hours of rush hour, I'm comfortable with not having any condition on that.
Okay, so why don't we just take a straw poll on Condition 10 and...
Yeah, but just so you understand, Condition 10 incorporates by reference the entire use of the multipurpose room. Now, there are some footnotes on there that the board might not want to get rid of, such as footnote number 3. For every production, residents will have a period of seven days prior to tickets being offered to non-residents to purchase tickets at a senior discount. You might not want to eliminate that, so you might want to just eliminate the conditions that restrict the number of performances they can have. But remember, this thing was presented to the board as not only being a benefit to the community, but being a specific benefit to the residents of the senior living facility.
We would agree that on Exhibit A6, that the one note 3, that that could remain. Is that something that we, the applicant intends to do anyway?
And how about Condition 4? Tickets will be, theater will be offering paid ticketed productions once a month for residents and non-residents?
That, I think, ties to the 12 productions.
That ties to the 12.
Yeah, and the limitations on rehearsals, now that Condition Number 6 has been modified to block out that time, that would be irrelevant, right?
Correct.
So, the only condition that you want to keep out of this is number 3?
That for every production, residents will have a period of seven days prior to tickets being offered to non-residents to purchase tickets at a senior discount. Yeah, absolutely.
So, if I might make a comment, I, Mr. Hart, I hate to see you, I like to see you have more performances, I hate to see you get locked out of opportunities, but I'm not in favor of eliminating, having unlimited... We haven't heard from the public yet.
I'm trying to get to it, Jim.
So, I'm not liking the way this is going, that we're just going to eliminate this, with the exception of Number 3. I think, again, I'd like to see you have more opportunities and give them more flexibility, but I'm not in favor of just eliminating it entirely.
Okay, so we're going to, if that's the case, the board's going to have to figure out exactly what the limits of the flexibility, what are the limits to the flexibility?
Is it up to us to figure it out, or is it up to the applicant to...
They're asking you to modify the condition, if you're not comfortable getting rid of the whole thing, you've got to tell them what you are comfortable with.
Can we get a sense from the board, how many people are in favor of elimination versus how many people would want a cap? Can we do that?
Yep, that's a good idea, maybe.
May I just say one thing? We haven't heard from the public yet, can we table this until we hear from the public?
Well, we, usually, public comment is at the end, and then...
Then we can deliberate.
We deliberate.
But if you felt that you'd want public input before that, do you have discretion to say, this is not public comment in general, you want to hear from the public on this issue of a limitation or a non-limitation on the number of productions? You can ask.
Right, but I like, I agree with Ms. Manduk. I'd like to have a straw poll do entirely eliminate Condition 10. If we, if that, if the straw poll says that, no, we don't want the entire elimination, then at least we're honing in on something. So, I'd like to have a straw poll of completely eliminating Condition 10 of the resolution. Mr. Aiorio?
At this moment, no.
Mr. Demergian?
I'm a no.
Mr. Seville?
I'm a yes.
Ms. Miss Tranchela?
I'm a no until I hear from the public.
Mr. Baumann?
I'm a yes.
Ms. Manduk?
Yes.
Mr. Malick?
I'm a yes.
And I'm a no, so we're 4-4.
May I ask Mr. Hart a question?
Sure. Let me ask Mr. Schley's question.
All right, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. These additional productions that you talked about, these opportunities that come along from time to time, what are we talking about? One more a month, two more a month? Because when we look at this, when we look at this number of productions, it says 12 productions, right? That's basically once a month. But you're talking about adding other opportunities throughout the course of the month, presumably there are other productions. So, what would that be? Would that be one more, two more? Is it a total of 36 productions a year?
Put it this way, he has to answer, but remember what he said before? About cabarets, he doesn't want to send anyone off, I don't know, if you can answer the question, answer it.
No, well, no, it, we don't want to pinpoint ourselves to one thing, I mean, the tour...
I don't want to...
Yeah, the tour situation was one thing, and that does not happen often. But if we can do one-offs on a Saturday evening with a cabaret, or on a Sunday afternoon, bring in a quartet for an orchestra concert, something like that, we'd like to be able to offer these. The more variety we can offer the community, the more the community, we can offer to them and they will have more enjoyment, and that's our whole goal. Our whole goal is to be able to offer the community more variety of arts so they don't have to travel to New York, or they don't have to travel to Milburn, or something like that.
So, when you're talking about the community, you're talking about the residents of Fellowship Village as well as the residents of Burner's Township, right?
Absolutely, both.
Okay, in the area, okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Banish, then is the question better asked, the number of performances, right? If the variety of productions increases, but the frequency of performance or the run that that production has is shorter, like a one-off cabaret on a Saturday night, then we're really considering the number of performances, right? Because it could be 48 different shows, one a night. That's 48 performances and 48 productions, right?
Right.
So, in, Mr. Hart, if you were to achieve your goal...
So, so, in, Mr. Hart, if you were to achieve your goals for the theater, your personal goals for the theater, how many performances in a year would you like to see?
Good question. Would we like to see something going on there every weekend? I don't think we would have something going on there every single weekend.
But he was asking, what would you like to see?
What would I like to see?
You're the theater manager and we're going to hope you hit your performance objectives.
I'm going to say 200.
200 performances a year?
Yeah.
Got it.
May I ask a question of the second prong of this is current use of the multipurpose room. You're getting rid of these very specific uses of it. You could use the multipurpose room for other days, for a wedding or for a community fair or for a 4-H fair, I don't know.
Actually, I would suggest, I was only talking about Roman 1. I was not talking about removing Roman 2.
You were.
No.
Because I believe applicant's attorney said to remove...
She said everything but number 3, but I assumed that was under Roman 1, not under Roman 2.
Are you looking to remove Roman 2? Because that gives a lot more flexibility to the, I'm used to the multipurpose room.
No, I was saying it's 1 as well.
As I understood, it was this whole condition, right?
Correct.
Just to be clear, Roman 2 goes on to the next page.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, correct.
The question is, are you looking for the elimination of the condition restrictions on Roman 2?
It cuts both ways. My suggestion is no matter what they say, leave...
The, Roman 2, I think, I think Roman 2 may actually apply to what was the existing multipurpose room before the theater and multipurpose room was approved. So it's a separate standalone functioning room within the facility that is, that is not about the theater.
But because it's a multipurpose room and a theater, these things would still be allowed to happen. If you eliminate them, you might be making it more restrictive because...
Right, but I just want to be clear on what I think Roman 2 is. And that was a, that was a response, that was a...
I understand, but look what it says in parentheses, to be continued.
So maybe we need to see clarification from the applicant, right?
Yes, that's what they're doing now.
Right, that was another, if memory serves me correctly, during the site plan application, that was another room in the building that they continue to use that way. And they came to us and they said, and they came to the board, excuse me, came to the board and said, "We can't get everything done in our multipurpose room because it's too small. We're all jammed in there and here, look at all the stuff that we do in that room."
Right, and they were...
Wait a minute. I know for a fact that voting is done in the theater.
Right.
I just, I, so...
So I'm saying, I think they become synonymous with each other.
Have they?
And they use the theater slash multipurpose room for a variety of activities.
Look at Roman 1, use of theater in multipurpose room.
Multipurpose room, right.
Roman 2 is current uses of multipurpose room by non-residents to be continued.
Continued.
You want them continued, you don't want to eliminate that, correct? Can't hear you.
Correct, we want to continue those uses.
So you're not looking for the elimination of Roman 2?
That's correct.
We will not eliminate Roman 2.
That's why I wanted to know. But you're not looking to expand the uses in Roman 2 either?
Correct.
I suppose for tonight, we will not have a discussion about expanding those uses.
Okay, so I think now, normally we would have public question of Mr. Dean. But I think we're going to flex a little bit. And we're going to have, not general public comment, but we're going to have comment from the public on the issue about the number of performances and the number of productions, that restriction being expanded or lifted entirely. So at this point, I'm going to open up the public portion for comments on this issue only.
And I just suggest that everyone keep in mind that Mr. Hart, if he had his way, would have up to 200, 200 performances a year.
Correct, so let, please, someone come up, we will, about this issue, about performances, the performance and production cap. Please come up, Ms. Pinson. And if you could identify yourself and your address, please.
My, my name is Jay Berry. My address is 165 South Maple Avenue.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong person.
Okay, can you raise your right hand?
I'm sorry, thank you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony on this very specific limited issue will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And can you spell your last name for the record?
Capital B as in Boy, A-R-R-E.
And I'm sorry for saying the wrong name, I'm sorry.
And your address again?
165 South Maple Avenue.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Berry.
I have been working in the theater since it was, we worked, my husband and I both helped in the design of the theater. We spent many hours here at the planning board, getting this theater approved, and always knowing and hoping that this day would come when they would lift the restrictions entirely on the theater, so that we could offer more variety to the public and so that more different types of presentations, such as Scott was talking about, like Sunday afternoon concerts. We can't do those right now, because we're limited on the amount of productions per month.
Yes, you're in favor of lifting the restriction on productions and performances, period?
I am, I am in favor of lifting this restriction.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to come up? Come on up. Anybody else, come on up. If you could state and spell your last name and your address, please.
My name is Bertha, B-E-R-G-H-A, Whalen, W-H-A-L-I-N. I live at 2131 Fellowship Road. I am a resident of Fellowship Village.
Can you raise your right hand? And do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give on this limited issue will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please go ahead.
So we've been to many of the performances. Yes, we live on the top side of your picture, so our apartment is not directly on the oval. However, we know many residents who do live on the oval, and they are not impacted in any way with the traffic or the parking. And let me tell you, if there's anything that's going wrong, it is just like being in college, and the gossip is tremendous. So if there was a problem, it would be, oh, it was awful last night. There were so many cars, there were so many lights. There's nothing.
Yes, I take it, you're also in favor of lifting the restrictions on the number of productions and performances?
I am, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Someone else would like to come up, please?
My name, my name is Ronald Whalen. Just a little more.
Let me guess, 2131 Fellowship...
You got it.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give on this limited issue will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I swear that the testimony I give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and all of that, but the truth.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Whalen.
We, we're pretty active in doing productions, and we've been part of all the activity that's going on in terms of putting on plays. We have the, something called the Village Players. Residents get involved. And so we're very interested in having a lot of nice programs, and so that means lifting the restrictions, and I'm very much in favor of lifting the restrictions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone out there that's opposed to lifting the restrictions?
No.
Do you want to keep on hearing everyone in favor of it?
Well, I think it's public comment and members of the public have a right to comment, so come out, come up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Vias. I'm the producing artistic director of the American Theater Group, the professional theater company that's in residence at the Zieminski Theater.
Can you spell your last name?
Certainly. It's V as in Victor, A-G-I-A-S.
And what's your...
I'm the producing artistic director of the professional company that is in residence at Fellowship.
Okay, and what's the name of that professional company?
That company is the American Theater Group, which has been in existence for 10 years. We have had a number of productions prior to coming to Basking Ridge that have been directed by Tony Award-winning actors, Emmy Award-winning actors, et cetera. We will be having an event the end of this month to honor two-time Tony Award winner, Christine Ebersol. My perspective as someone that's just come to the community is that you have a jewel. You have a mini Carnegie Hall, you have a mini Lincoln Center. It is a stunning, stunning theater. I've not seen many theaters like this in the state, and I must confess kind of being confused as to why...
Did I swear you on yet?
No.
Thank you.
Everything I said prior to that was a lie.
Do you swear the testimony you just gave and the additional testimony you're obviously going to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. And I'm sort of at a loss as to why you would want to limit any use of that facility. It appears to me that the community can benefit by the maximum use of that facility. You don't close down Carnegie Hall, you don't close down Lincoln Center when you have something that magnificent.
But you do realize that the reason they did it originally was because of traffic concerns, and in New York City, you don't have traffic concerns, right?
And you don't, and you don't close down Paper Mill Playhouse.
Right, and they, correct, but you do realize, I know you're saying...
No, I understand, I do understand that.
So you're saying at this point, after hearing what the traffic expert has said and Mr. Hart has said, I take it you're suggesting to the board that there's no reason not to lift the restrictions? Is that what your point is?
That is exactly my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would come, call out, to come up and comment? I guess seeing none, I'll close this specific comments section. What? Now we have to pay a public questioning of Mr. Dean by members of the public, so I'm going to open the public portion for questions from the public of Mr. Dean of his testimony. Would anybody like to come up and ask Mr. Dean specific questions on his testimony? Seeing none, close that public questioning. So you have, both of your witnesses have testified, Ms. Smith?
But we have one more condition to go.
Right, we do, but I wanted to know both, both of your witnesses have...
That's correct, we do not have any, anyone further to bring up to testify.
Okay, so now we have condition, we have the, well, the applicant has agreed to modify condition 6.
Correct, got it.
Condition 10, we still have to...
Correct, you still have to...
We have to decide what the board's going to do on condition 10.
Right.
And then we have condition 22...
Where they want to eliminate only paragraph 6.
Only paragraph 6. All right, so let's take condition, in order, condition 10. We've had discussion, we've heard specific public comment, and we have gotten Mr. Hart's comments, we've gotten Mr. Dean's parking totals, so let us...
Again, straw poll a second time, because after people have heard this, they might want to change their opinion.
All right, so now we're again, how do we feel about totally eliminating condition 10, given what we have just heard from various members of the public as well as the witnesses? Mr. Malick, we're going to go on your side.
I'm in favor of eliminating.
Ms. Mandu?
In favor of eliminating.
Mr. Baumann?
Same, in favor of eliminating.
Ms. Masstrancillo?
In favor.
Okay.
Same.
Okay, Mr. Demergian?
This tie into the condition 6 somehow?
This will be related to...
Well, if we are related, we still have...
Yeah, we can, it's fine, we can...
Okay. Mr. Aorio?
I'm in favor as well.
And I'm in favor, so it looks like condition 10, the board on a straw poll has said that we would eliminate condition 10 about...
Specifically, no.
No, the cap about...
It's going to be modified.
Modify section 1.
To knock out everything except for note 3.
Right.
Correct.
But keep Roman numeral 2.
2, correct.
I thought we just talked about condition 22, no?
Talking about just 10.
No, we're not at 22.
They redid number 10 after hearing everything. You changed your vote from no yet.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead to paragraph 6. I was reading paragraph 6. And I was talking about 7:00 PM, that's why I asked about 7:00 PM.
Right, no, we're on condition 10 about our...
So we're going to keep the block?
Okay. Then I'm going to, not that it matters, but I'm changing mine to a no.
A no, all right, okay. Okay, so on condition 20, okay, on condition 10, we are going to keep Roman numeral 2 and keep number 3 in the note.
Keep Roman 2 and keep note 3 in Roman 1.
In Roman 1, okay. Now we get to 22, which is paragraph, they want to eliminate paragraph 6.
And I can probably clarify that based on what we've heard today. So I think it's just the first sentence, because the second sentence says, "For events, cast, production, and crew shall be directed to park in the Health Center lot," and that will still occur.
So in other words, we're going to make condition 6 consistent with condition number 6?
Correct. Paragraph 2 of condition 22 would then be consistent with condition number 6.
Right. And specifically, condition number 6 is going to be, "There shall be no weekday, Monday through Friday, public paid performances in the multipurpose room slash theater before 4:00 PM and after 7:00 PM."
There shall be no between 4 and 7 PM.
Between 4 and 7.
Between, between 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM.
Right.
And that's going to be the same, that's going to be the new first sentence for paragraph 6 of the February 16, 2016 Parking Management Program.
That's correct.
What I'm going to ask you to do is give me a revised Parking Management Program with a revised language with tonight's date on it, and give me a revised use of multipurpose room. It's not going to be Exhibit 6, you're just going to give me a revised use of multipurpose room, which is going to knock out all of 1 except for note 3 and keep Roman 2 in, because I will attach them to the resolution modifying these conditions.
Okay, so now we have to do public comment again about the application in general.
You got it.
Open for a public comment, general public comment about the application. Seeing none, I close the public portion. Do you have any wrap-up, Ms. Smith?
No, thank you.
You can wave it.
No, thank you.
Okay, so now we are into deliberation and a vote.
Well, I would like to thank you for your patience with us, muddling through this and for answering our questions. I thought it was a very thorough presentation and questioning by the board, so I'm satisfied with the different modifications in the application, and I'm particularly satisfied because I heard from the comment of the public who is in favor of the increased productions and performances.
Okay, any other comments from members, please? Okay, I also was very happy to hear from the residents about the lifting of the productions and performances, because I was most concerned about the impact on the residents of this condition being lifted. So I will be in favor of the application as modified with the conditions to which the applicant agreed. Any other comments from members? So I guess we have to go to a vote?
Motion?
And a motion, and a second, and a vote. So who would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the application based off of the modifications made by tonight.
Okay, a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumann. Roll call, Mr. Schley.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Demergian?
No.
Ms. Mandu?
Yes.
Mr. Strangello?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Oriole?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much for your time this evening, we appreciate it.
You can also draft the resolution, you can send me an email and ask me for my form of a modification with those two documents, everything as Word doc.
And I just wanted to put one item on the record about Mr. Baumann, I think he was-
Oh, yes, Mr. Baumann.
Mr. Baumann's name came up on the list of two hundred footers, even though he doesn't own property within two hundred feet, he used to live on-
Eighty Shannon Hill.
Eighty Shannon Hill.
Eighty.
Eight zero.
Eight zero Shannon Hill, and that's how it got there, but he does not own property, he does not live within two hundred feet, so he does not have a conflict of interest, and his participation and vote was totally appropriate.
Thank you for bringing that on the record.
I forgot twice.
To be clear, it wasn't actually on the two hundred footers provided by the town, but his name was on one of the green cards, he sent the notice to it, so.
Yeah.
Yes, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, right now we have comments from members, and Mr. Demergian, you were going to give a summary of the landscaping committee?
Yes, thank you, yes, let me just dig up my email. Okay, so this is a summary landscape committee for Fenwick Place. I guess it's also known as Bell Edwards Developers. So last Tuesday evening-
Is that the one across from-
Valley Road, across from the baseball field.
Across from the ballpark.
That was the one that was extended all those times?
Yes. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Demergian.
Yeah, so landscape committee consisted of myself, Chairwoman Kippi Perici, and Gary. And basically, we met with a developer, his landscaper, Anthony from High Tech, and there were six neighbors present. The scope of the inspection was the landscaping installed on the southerly portion of lot 10.01, which was basically a detention basin area. All of the plantings were sufficient for the plan. There were two or three replacement trees that we were told by High Tech, they were approved by David Schley, is that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The other portion of the development that was inspected was the buffer, the twenty-five foot buffer area, and the developer far exceeded the number of trees that were required. There were two comments from neighbors, Mr. De Silva on Valley Road. David, he, he said he was expecting to have his property screened more, and the developer, you know, indicated that, well, there was a process to review the plans, but the developer was also very generous, and he offered to satisfy the resident, Val De Silva, if, if he requested additional trees. We told Mr. De Silva that you would reach out to him-
Yeah, I'll coordinate all that.
-to get his comments, and then if, I don't know, if you mediate between he and the developer, just find out what he wants. He was not adamant about anything specifically, he just sort of commented on it, on it, and we told him you would reach out there.
Yeah, I'll let the two of them work it out and, and make sure it's worked out amicably so the neighbors-
And then Gerard Ellis indicated there was some water running on his property, and it was determined that once the final grading was complete, it will probably be eliminated. So right now, I think there's really no action required until we have final grading and we can revisit with Mr. Ellis.
The engineering department will certainly make sure that's all, final grading is according to plan, and if Mr. Ellison has any concerns, they can work that out with the engineering department.
Right. The, the, Mr. Ellis was, I think, maybe looking to have some grading done now, but the developer indicated that if anything was done now, the water might go onto someone else's property. Gary was actually present during that discussion, I don't know if you want to elaborate on any of this?
Yeah, you know, the, the resident's opinion was that the current condition of the site, the development, is exacerbating a condition whereby his property is taking excessive runoff. And you could see evidence of water pathway on the ground, velocity to it, and you could see some, some soil erosion as a result. So not knowing the condition prior, never having had a chance to witness it, it wasn't unreasonable, and looking at the topsoil stockpiles, the, it looks to me very much like he's net positive cut fill and he's got some export, so there's quite a bit of grading left to be done. And yes, the current condition of the development is, is certainly exacerbating that condition.
Yeah, that's something the engineering department can address too, if it's unreasonable, you know, even during construction.
So the resident should report it to engineering?
Yeah, and he has, I mean, early on, Mr. Ellison has, has communicated with the township engineer on that. So actually, one of the conditions of approval was before planting was done on that side of the property, for the township engineer, he and I went out there to, to make sure that the plantings weren't going to upset the proposed and designed drainage paths, you know, to make, to have the landscaping actually undermine the grading plan, and that was done, and-
Yeah.
Follow-up on that can be done, and Mr. Ellison knows who to contact, you know, to resolve that. Certainly, the township engineer will go out there, take a look at it, or our inspectors will stay on top of that.
I remember this one, this is an infill development.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
This is what happens.
Right.
Sure, sure, and until you get, you know, subgrade down, topsoil spread, and attacks with root, the water runs overland. It's not inclined to infiltrate or be used by rootstock, so it's going to find its gravity.
There were drainage issues, pre-construction.
Yeah, yeah, and there were, my understanding was there were drainage issues pre-construction.
Right.
But as far as the landscape committee goes, the plantings were satisfactory and met the requirements.
Right.
Yep.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Baumann and Mr. Demergian because I could not handle the uneven terrain of an active construction site, so I basically just had to stay in the road, and I talked with the residents there, and Mr. Schley said that typically the landscaping committee goes out after the site is not active construction and it's more even. So I, I said I semi-retired from landscaping committee because it's an active construction site because I just couldn't handle it.
You probably should have been wearing a hard hat too.
What?
You should have been wearing a hard hat too.
Right, yes, and there should have been a tick check at the end of it, because it's a fairly dense and vegetated site.
Oh, no, I had my rain boots and long pants and socks.
Sounds like you should have snowshoes on.
I, that was the last thing, if I couldn't find the rain boots. The other thing that we have to think about is that our next meeting, Mr. Vanish, you will have the next session, the next element.
Yes.
The following meeting is July fifth, and I'd like to know right now, am I, are we going to get a quorum?
I will be here. So wait, the next meeting though is June twenty-fourth?
First, which is a regular meeting of the master plan. The meeting after that is July fifth, and I'd like to know if everybody knows right now, are they going to be available or not? Mr. Malick?
I think I will be here.
Ms. Mandu?
I will not be here.
Mr. Baumann?
I will not be here June twenty-first, July fifth, I will be available.
Okay, July fifth.
No.
Okay, Mr. De Silva?
I will be here on July-
Okay.
What day is it?
It's a Tuesday, day after the fourth.
Yeah, I'll be here, sure.
Mr. Oriole?
I'm here.
Why don't we, is there anything on the agenda?
Well, yeah, there might be, and I will not be here, so we have our-
Mr. Baumann will be running.
Mr. Baumann may be running the meeting if we have it.
We actually, we don't, since we finished tonight, we finished Fellowship.
Yeah.
What's on-
We have a couple administrative items, a completeness review, and a request for a, a, extension of time to revise plans.
Could we handle those on the twenty-first?
Yes, we can handle that on the twenty-first, and then we have an application for that very same subdivision we were just talking about, a request to modify a condition to allow fences in a conservation easement on that property, but that can be-
You can kick that, right?
That can be put on August second.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess-
There's no real reason to have that meeting, to handle applications.
So I guess at this point, I'm going to cancel the July fifth meeting, so we'll be meeting on June twenty-first, and you will not be here, Mr. Baumann.
That's correct.
And then we'll have our normal second meeting in July, so-
In July.
Second, second meeting in June twenty-first, and then on, we'll have it on the fifth, well, the nineteenth of July would be our regular second meeting of master plan.
Yep.
So, any other comments from members? And thank you, Mr. Schley, for pinch hitting very well.
Yeah. We haven't seen the minutes yet.
And any comments from staff, Mr. Schley or Mr. Vanish?
No.
And I think we had a, quite an interesting evening, so I'm ready to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I oppose, this meeting's adjourned.